Please state your full name and office you're running for.
My name is Delia Lopez and I'm running for a city council here in the city of Montebello.
Do you live in Montebello? If so, how long have you been a resident?
I do live in Montebello. I've been a resident. I moved back to Montebello about little over two years ago. I was raised in this area and I also went to high school here.
What is your current occupation?
Currently, I'm a public relations specialist, so I work with companies, small, medium, and large. Currently, my large, I work with a company as a major corporation. And I basically, I help them create communications plans, everything from start to finish, which includes also managing their budget, which they obviously allocate towards any plans and campaigns that I put together. So I'm helping these companies tell their story and help them grow as well, within whatever market or demographic that they're trying to reach.
Do you feel, do you feel your occupation and personal life will allow sufficient time to dedicate to the office of city council?
Yes, I've already planned out my timing. Luckily, I'm, I have a job that allows me flexibility and has been very supportive of my campaign. So I will have the ability, especially with public relations. A lot of times, it's not so much where you're located, but rather, you know, to have the ability to have a computer and be online and be on the phone a lot. So luckily, I have that flexibility. Personally, I have a family that is fully supportive. So they will be involved in one way, shape, or form. They may not know it right now, but they will be involved. And so I do have a lot of support from them, which is obviously very important when you're in a, in a position of that, of that type.
Have you been involved in any community work, such as clubs, organizations, events, or volunteer service?
Yes, I, I mean, I've been involved in volunteer organizations for a long time. You know, starting with when my dad was involved in like neighborhood watch programs. I would see him organize our community in East LA, so I was involved there. Throughout school, throughout even college, I was always involved in some type of student council organizations, pre-law organizations. But then recently, through work, I have also been on the board and president of the Hispanic Public Relations Association. So we, you know, our goal is to help students who are in communications throughout the state of California, help them achieve their goals, whether through scholarships, mentors, and also job opportunities. So I've been involved in that way. And then currently, I also work with, in my company, we have a women's organization called Viva Women, which is all about empowerment and helping women, whether it's through our network of agencies or outside of our, of our agency, is working with women to help them achieve their goals and help balance, work-life balance is a, is a big issue that we work on.
How long would you say you have been, you've been dedicating your time to these services?
I've been dedicating a lot of time to these services. For me, it's always been an integral part of my work. So anytime I have had the opportunity to do, combine my work with these organizations, then that I think is a big win for me. So I've been dedicating a lot of my time with it, like I said, even through high school and, and college. But now, more importantly, being a mom, I think it's also been one of those reasons why I, I like to help students, because obviously, my son is in the same position, you know, he's looking for opportunities to find mentors and internships. So I know how important it is to have those resources in place for students.
Do you generally spend time patroning business or visiting public spaces in Montebello? If so, which businesses or locations do you enjoy?
I do. Growing up in the area, like I said, I know one of the, the favorite spots our family would go to on the weekends was the Golden Ox. That was always our favorite spot. Today, my brother and I frequent Ari's and we, we love those types of places. Recently, I was introduced to Ground Up. I love that place. I have to tell you, their coffee is amazing. And, and for me, it's so cool to see something like that local, that was created locally, is something that we should all support. So anytime I can, I will stop there and grab my coffee before I go to work. Other places that I frequent, obviously, the movie theaters with my family and, and the mon, the shops at Montebello, obviously, is a good retail place to go. And now they've got new restaurants there, so that's also a good place to go.
What motivates you to do, what motivates you to want to dedicate your time and energy to serve, guide, and protect the residents of Montebello?
You know, having, having been raised in this area and then going to high school here. I did move away once I went to college. I went to Stanford and then I, I moved to Mexico City and I lived there. And once I got back, you know, I came back to this area and a lot of it was very familiar. I still have a lot of good friends and, and family friends here. And that, that aspect of Montebello is what I think is, what makes us special, is that family feeling, a small time, small-town feeling, but yet it's not a small town. But at the same time, looking at it, you know, and I was, you know, in high school in the eighties, not to date myself, but I was here in the eighties. It still had a lot of that, which is good and bad. I think there are, the good is that, obviously, like I said, it maintains that family feeling. The bad, and it's not bad, but it's just, there is some need to revitalize our city, to help it grow, to help it progress, whether that is from everything small, even though it's not small, to fixing our streets and trimming our trees, but to also, what kind of businesses are we attracting? How are we attracting them? What does Montebello have to offer? And how are we putting that, packaging that to ensure that we're bringing the right types of business to our city? So I think those are the things that are motivating me. But above all too, is just creating that trust, the trust with our residents. I think some of that has fallen through the cracks for one reason or another. I think it's time for our leadership to really mobilize, to create better dialogue. And as a communications person, I think that that, yeah, that's important, is how you have that dialogue. Let's make sure we're listening, not just talking to our residents. But also, when we are listening and having dialogue, is making sure that as residents come with their concerns, let's, let's create some solutions together. I, I'm all for, you know, being out there, being activist, but at the same time, if you can't present solutions, then, you know, it becomes a one-way street. Let's create some, some dialogue that, that builds solutions together.
What are the main goals you would like to accomplish as a city council member?
Because some of my main goals, first and foremost, as I mentioned previously, I think trust is a big issue right now in our city council. And a lot of that, obviously, building trust is an important piece of being able to do your job. And I think that that should be our first main goal, not just mine, but I think of all four members or five members of the city council. How do you build trust? I mean, I think a lot of it comes down to communication, dialogue, and being able to listen to residents. Obviously, making sure that everybody knows that city council meetings are open to the public. But also, maybe there's a chance to do more than just at city council meetings. Maybe it's working with our organizations, even our police officers who have, you know, community outreach officers. Let's work with them to create audiences in smaller sections of our city where residents can come and not just voice their concerns, but also listen to some of the things that are being planned. A lot of times, I think that communication and being able to explain the things that are happening in our city oftentimes helps to build, to bridge that gap, maybe that's occurring with trust. On top of that, I think the next goal would be to look at how we are developing business within our city. I think we have some key departments within our city, like the Economic Development Department, even our city, to the city manager. All of us together need to sit down to really evaluate how, what plans are being put in place in terms of the businesses that are being looked at for possible opportunities in Montebello, or what businesses are we not looking at?
Excuse us guys, we are in an outside environment. Please proceed.
Okay, so we were talking about business development. I think, again, it's important for the, the city council to be able to review and, and consult with our city departments from the Economic Development Department to our Planning Commission, how we're planning and how we're attracting businesses to our city. You know, it's, obviously, one of our, one of the things that we need here is, is good retail, good restaurants. And all of those are very important for our city to thrive. And I, and I would love to do that. I think we can do that. It's not as easy as saying like, I'm just gonna open the doors to Trader Joe's or Northgate Markets, which are great things to, to aspire to, but let's make sure that we've got our things in place. How are we attracting those businesses? What kind of rules and regulations do we have in place for businesses and is it business-friendly? Without also forgetting that we might have small businesses here, how do, how are we supporting those businesses? So I think all together, that will help us develop a better plan and hopefully attract the right types of businesses that, on the, the third goal, which is generating revenue. Obviously, that is gonna help us generate revenue, because we do have, you know, the ability to stabilize the, the budget. There's a really big need for that right now. I think year after year, there's been the ability to do that, but it's been, you know, taking funds from one area to, you know, cover another area. How do we stabilize that? How do we prepare a long-term plan? You know, is, is it a four- or five-year plan where we are able to look at how we're addressing certain shortfalls, how we're addressing certain areas that we need to address, like infrastructure? And making sure that while there are funds for public safety, which is very important, we're not forgetting that we also have a need for fixing our roads and, and our streets. So those, I think, encompass the main goals that I would say, as a city council member, I would, I would want to work towards.
What skills, attributes, or resources do you possess that will allow you to accomplish your goals?
I think, again, as a communications person, one of my biggest attributes is the ability to create dialogue, but also the ability to listen. I, I believe that I'm someone who wants to listen to all sides of an issue. Once I'm able to, to understand all sides, I will do my research, I will do my, my homework to be able to understand the, the opportunities, the weaknesses, and the, maybe the, some of the areas that we need to address before we commit to any sort of policy decision as a, as a council. And then, of course, it's making sure that within this, the city council, as members of the city council, we're able to have that dialogue. I think it's very important that we all come to the table as, first off, residents of Montebello, with that in mind, with creating those decisions that are going to ultimately affect all our lives, because we all live here. So I think that's the biggest, again, attribute is my communication skills. Also too, as a communicator and as a, as someone who has also worked on her own as a consultant, I've had to do from A to Z when it comes to projects and campaigns for, for clients. That's how I've built trust. And that, with that trust comes also the management of budgets. Because, you know, ultimately, when I present a plan, I'm telling them, trust me with your $10,000, and that's on the small end, you know, that I'm going to create results for you. So at the end of the day, I will be, that, that will be something that I will have to show, that I was able to create the results they were looking for and spent their money in a way that created those results. So I think that's another aspect of being able to look at a budget, being able to allocate appropriately, and then also being able to communicate at the end of the day, how that money was, was spent and the kind of results that were achieved through that. So I think those are, those are big attributes that I would say will, will help our city council.
What do you feel is a reasonable timeline to, what do you feel is a reasonable timeline for you to accomplish your goals?
These are big goals. They are goals that will take some time. And I think that working with a group of people that hopefully are like-minded, that have the same, and I feel like there are a solid group of people, everybody looking to help Montebello move forward. And I think that's been a big, I think, overarching thread amongst all our campaigns. It's moving Montebello forward, creating trans, trust, transparency, et cetera. I think at the end of the day, it'll come down to how we all manage that as a, as a council. You know, the, the terms are now four-year terms. I think it's reasonable to say that in four years, we should see that the trust starting to build. We should be able to see business plans in place and we should be able to see some kind of difference, absolutely, because otherwise, again, we will be, you know, accountable for that. So, so I think in that term, in the, in this term for city council, we, you know, I will be working towards that.
Montebello has suffered through several years of financial hardship. What specifics would you take to put our city on a firmer financial footing?
You know, I think it, it is unfortunate that we've been suffering from structural deficit for several years. I think, again, it goes back to working together, not just as a council, but as a, as a city group, government, altogether. I think coming, sitting, making sure that we're discussing these kinds of issues with our city manager, city treasurer, all the departments that handle the, the finances for our city, and making sure too, that we have a long-term plan. What is that long-term plan and how do we put that in place? So I would like to make sure that, that I'm an integral part of that discussion, that I'm also able to, sorry.
I apologize guys, we had to wait for the airplane to fly by.
So we were talking about creating an integral plan that involves all our departments in the city. This is not a, an issue that I think only the city council can solve. This is gonna take a lot more people to help us put together a solid plan. A plan that's not just a year-by-year plan, but rather a long-term plan. And I think those are the things that I would like to set in place so that it becomes an integral part of every year, everything that we do, year after year.
Many neighboring cities have been, have had an increase in new small businesses that provide creative products and services. It's been said that the city's regulations have discouraged small businesses from starting up in Montebello and haven't inhibited their survival. Do you agree with the statement? If no, why do you feel these statements businesses seem to be lacking in Montebello? If yes, what could the city council change to attract these type of businesses?
So I, I believe that there, there has been some issues with attracting businesses, whether small or large. And I think that that is one of the, the big issues that we face here in Montebello. So I, again, this is an issue that, that Montebello faces, is how we're attracting businesses. So I think there is something, something that we need to look at is what kind of policies, regulations do we have in place that are detracting from, from bringing in businesses? But also, I think we need to look at carefully, what are our demographics? How are we attracting these small businesses and where are we attracting them? I think if we ensure that we're also planning smart, you know, doing smart planning and development versus plopping someone in an area where maybe they're not gonna get the foot traffic or the, the audience, the demographic that they're looking for isn't necessarily there. It's creating these zones, these areas where small businesses, any business can thrive. So I think that's one of the first things that we need to look at is also how we're planning and zoning these areas where these small, small businesses are going to be set up.
The homeless plan, the homeless concern is a big and complicated issue for many cities. What steps do you feel the city council should take to reduce homelessness and increase the safety of the residents?
Homelessness is definitely a big issue and it's not just a Montebello issue. This sadly is, is a big issue in our state. And I know that LA County is taking big steps towards addressing this. Because you've heard the issues in LA County, but also in Orange County. So we're in a, in a critical juncture where it's gonna take more than just Montebello trying to do something. This is where we have to work together with our neighboring cities, Comer's, Pico Rivera, Whittier, Downey, all these areas that encompass the San Gabriel Valley. There, there is a homeless plan that was put in place, working with the San Gabriel Valley, excuse me, Council of Governments. And it addresses all the needs that each of the, each of the cities had to present a plan of what they were going to be able to do and, and what their goals would be to address these issues. This is going to be an issue, a, a plan that will be put in place and that will take some time to, to take care of.
Sorry guys, another airplane passing by.
So with the homeless plan in place and working with the San Gabriel Valley communities, I think that we'll be able to address it. I know there's a lot of concern with homelessness, growing in our city, the safety of, of our, of our residents. So again, with a plan in place and also working very carefully with our organizations here in the city that already do a lot of great work for homeless in, in terms of homelessness. You know, St. Benedict's Church does, collects clothes for homeless. There's an organization called Heart of Compassion and they do a lot of food banks for homeless. These are great organizations we already have within our city and I think it's gonna be important to engage them, but also to have our residents keep an open mind as to how we as a city can help the situation. I think that together as, as a community, but also as a San Gabriel Valley community, we can put things in place that will help all of us address that issue and be, and also the, the safety issue.
A couple of years back, Montebello residents voted against the sale of its water company for $14.4 million. Do you feel it is the best interest of Montebello to keep its small water company?
I think it comes down to, to economics and, and budgets. My understanding is that our water company only serves 8% of our residents. That's a very small number and yet it takes a lot of our revenue to maintain it. Not to mention that it still has a lot of maintenance in the millions to be done to it, to more properly, you know, provide the services that it provides in terms of water qual, water quality as well. So I think that at the end of the day, we need to really take that into consideration and look at the possibility of having, of selling it. But also too, I think the big concern was also making sure that that process was transparent. Again, we go to transparency, in terms of the bidding process. So obviously, I'm open for there to be a very clear and concise bidding process for it. But I think, again, if our city is spending more money on something that isn't servicing the whole community or a very small portion of community, and I'm not saying that that 8% is not important, obviously, every resident is important. So one is, we need to make sure that those residents will still get the, the services that they are already used to, if not better. But at the same time, without having our budgets and our cities suffer because of the amount of, of money that goes into that.
A regulation, a revolution in public transportation has been occurring all over LA County, whether it be implementing bike lanes, using ride-share services, or the introduction of new devices such as the Bird scooter. What is your stance on allowing electric scooters to operate in Montebello?
I have to tell you, I'm gonna tell you an experience I had on an electric scooter. And it wasn't here in LA, but they're all over our, our country now. And it was my first time getting on an electric scooter and I thought, well, okay, let me try it, because I can't speak to it if I've never tried it. And so those things go really fast. If you're not careful how much you press on the button, you, I, I can see how people could either fall off and obviously that creates, you know, issues, safety issues. So I didn't have a helmet on and it was at night. They do have lights on. So I think those types of things need to be addressed before I would say, let's put birds or lime scooters in our city. And I know that a lot of cities like in Santa Monica and the West Side are addressing those now because of the incidents that have happened. So let's look at how those cities are addressing some of those things before we start implementing. I'm all for public transportation when it's available and it can get you from point A to B. I believe too, that I would love to see more bicycle lanes in our city. I know there's a, in the city, we have a bicycle coalition that does fun rides. And I, and I see it because I'm part of the Nextdoor app and I think that's wonderful. And I can't believe they do like 16, 20-mile rides. So they've obviously found bike, bike lanes that will help them create these rides, but I don't think we have enough in our city. And I believe that those are being addressed, especially now when we're looking at a new hub for light rail. So looking at that smart, smart development around our transport hubs, working with our Montebello bus lines, also to make sure we have the accurate bike rails for their buses. Like all of that's gonna help to contribute to more bike riders. But again, on the, on the scooters, I would say, let's, let's make sure we, we look at how other cities are addressing it before we bring it to our city.
The Montebello City Council voted on several marijuana issues that allowed for businesses-to-businesses distribution and delivery-only retailers in the city, as well as allowing commercial indoor cultivation, manufacturing, and testing of marijuana. A large part of the South at Montebello is industrial and commercial property where these companies will most likely manufacture goods, far from public property. Do you believe the current regulations are what is best for our city?
So the ordinance is, is very general right now. There are still a lot of regulations and including fees that need to be addressed. So my belief is that before we go and we, obviously, people, companies have already applied for their license, licenses. Before we accept any of these applications, I think it's very important that we make sure that working with our public safety officers who are very involved and who, who ultimately, I trust in their decisions to say whether those, the companies that are applying are actually companies that are going to take into account all the different safety and regulations that need to be in place. Obviously, state law, there's a lot of state laws that need to be adhered to. So I think it's important that working with our public safety and working with our city to ensure that all those things are in place before any company sets up shop will be my first priority before, before we move forward. But I think the ordinance, again, is something that we'll take very close look at and, and ensure that, again, the, the rule, the proper rules and regulations, whether they're fees and, and taxes, as well as the safety issue is addressed before any, anything else moves forward.
Being that these marijuana topics are so controversial, do you feel it is best for the city council to make the final decision on these matters or give the vote to the people of Montebello?
So I think, you know, putting, putting it out to a vote, we'll have to, we, we have to look at that. I think if there is an opportunity for a referendum, we should look at that, but also look at what is the cost of, of doing that. I also believe that this, this issue is something that our public safety is, is very involved with. My feeling in it is that, and I believe that our residents feel that they trust our public safety, they trust our police officers. So at the end of the day, if our police officers are looking at this, ensuring, like I said, proper safety, rules and regulations are there, that these companies are setting up shop based on and adhering to all state laws and regulations as well, then I feel that our residents, as long as they're being, this is being communicated to them, should be able to understand that this is something that will create positive things for our city as opposed to it being a negative. So I, I, I think that it's easy to say, yes, let's put it to a vote, but I don't think it's that easy. We need to really kind of identify what those things would be that would enable us to do that, if it makes sense.
Many followers of the page, everything in and around Montebello, have questioned why Montebello is not attractive, safe, or have diverse businesses at its neighboring cities. Do you feel the residents are more informed, involved, and have a sense of a city, a unity? Do you feel the residents that are more informed, involved, and have a sense of the city unity have a greater chance of guiding their city to a prosperous future?
I think that our city, there are so many residents that are very, very passionate about a lot of issues, about our city in general, and I think that's wonderful. I think canvassing and walking and, and talking to a lot of people, a lot of these issues come up. And, and I've also realized that there is a lot of people here who are very well-informed. We have a lot of brain power in Montebello. I think if we're able to harness that to, again, come back to the table, not just as a city, city council, yes, ultimately makes a lot of these decisions, but I think that we also need to build some type of a, a resident commission that sits down with and engages with people from our community that have the, the knowledge, from business developers to business owners to just residents in the different areas that can engage in dialogue and create solutions. That's how we start building trust and that's how we start building dialogue and communication that is two-way as opposed to if, if I'm gonna go to you and complain about something, I wanna be able to complain and say, have you looked at this? Have you considered this? These are some possible solutions. And I think that that's the kind of dialogue that we need to start creating in Montebello, so that it doesn't become also attacks, personal attacks, but rather, let's look at this, not as a personal issue, yes, because we all live in Montebello, but rather as, let's treat our, our city like a business and how are we going to help our city grow as a business? As a business from budgets to planning to execution. So I think um again, I wanna harness that passion to create really good solutions.
How would you improve the access of relevant and important city information to the residents?
So I know that our uh city council meetings are recorded and you can watch them uh. You know, if if you're not able to attend, um I wanna make sure too that we use uh some of these. There's so many communities and Facebook pages now, uh like this one, everything in and around Montebello. Um you know, you're from Montebello if. Let's harness that, again, that energy, that good energy to make sure that uh city council agendas are there. Um that even the uh minutes are also public there, published there. Um so utilizing some of the existing resources and existing community groups. To make sure that people are aware of what kind of decisions are are coming down the pipeline. Um and how they can get involved. So I think that. And then the second thing is, how do we also work with like our community outreach officers from our police force? Um they are open to creating, you know, neighborhood watch programs. If you call them, they will come out and they will help organize it for you. Well, maybe we harness that as another opportunity where we're not just talking about crime. But let's talk about what are the other issues that are happening and that may be another opportunity for dialogue. So again, and 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 lastly, I think we also have a pretty good uh population here of Spanish speakers. And it's not to say we don't also have Chinese, Japanese, Armenian speakers. So it's making sure too that if there are pockets of of those those communities that require the the language. That we identify that too and whether we translate certain material and have it available in other languages. And or have um translators on hand, especially for important issues.
What can be done to get residents more involved in decision-making process such as voting and attending city council meetings?
So again, I think um, you know, city council meetings are are every other Wednesdays and then the evening. If you're a mom, if you're a dad and and eh working. It's a lot of times it's gonna be hard for you to get to a city council meeting. Obviously, they're being recorded, so we hope that people are are watching. But even that, obviously, if you're a family, you're not gonna always have time to be doing that. So I think uh it it comes down to, again, working with local organizations, community-based organizations, um. Our community outreach officers. So that maybe we're not necessarily having a second council meeting outside of the city council meeting. But rather a synopsis of what happened in a council meeting. And or addressing particular issues that may come up aside from obviously the public safety issue. But also, you know, what is concerning uh those residents that come to a a a meeting. So it's, I think it's again identifying those opportunities where we can have smaller discussions that might lead to, you know, better dialogue.
What efforts could you make to gather the diverse populations of Montebello to share community experiences? Opportunities for strangers and neighbors to get to know each other and other, to create large bonds of community.
So I, you know, Montebel has a a lot of really great events um around town. And um I I recently went to the arts um arts event that was held in Montebello Park. And that organization is amazing. I mean, it brought so many different arts and music to the park. And I think those types of of eh events and activities is a way to bring, whether you're a a longtime resident, a new resident. Or even not a resident from Montebello, but you're into the arts and culture. Those type of things are opportunities to one showcase Montebello's being progressive and into, you know. And and also a a patron of the arts and culture. Um let's let's do those things. But also, again, I think it's. How do we work with our community organizations like, I mean, the YMCA is here. Uh we have Beverly Hospital here. Um Beverly Hospital just had a farmer's market. How do we expand on that? So it's it's creating these little pockets of opportunities that again build. There's the the feel, the good feelings that we have for Montebello. But also help share that with other people that may not be from Montebello. Because we don't just have Montebello residents, for example, going to Beverly Hospital. We have lots of different people going there. This is a way that we can showcase that Montebello is growing, that Montebello is a city that we're proud of.
That that includes our questions. Is there anything else you would like to share?
I think um I just wanna share that, you know, I um I know there are a lot of candidates. That this is a a an important election for our city. I just want people to know that um I am someone who is eh an independent leader. Someone who can be, eh again, I can, I can build, I know I can build that trust with residents. Um I wanna be able to have dialogue with people. I think if if anybody approaches me. I'm more than happy to to have conversations with them. But I think more importantly, I'm someone who's just ready to go in there, work hard for us, for our, for our city. Um and and help implement changes that will ha- put us back on on the right path. Uh a path that's gonna take time, but if we don't start somewhere, um. You know, it's not gonna, we're not gonna get there. So I I just want people to understand that. I am um, I am someone that I hope will um garner their trust. And um and someone that I hope that they will consider as they're voting this November.
Good. Thank you so much for being with us, Sir Delia.
Thank you.
My name is Jenny and this was Delia.